All right, this is the August 18th, 2022, meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. All members of the board are present. Our host today is Robert Craig. And we have a few people in the waiting room. So start off with, as we do, which is a public comment period. That's the first thing anybody wants to address anything relating to planning, you can use a public comment period. And then we also have one after toward the end of the meeting. I do want to say that we have, at least we have one item on the agenda. The determination of adequacy of a way at Six Gold Cove Lane. This is a new application. And it's not going to be decided tonight. But we will take public comment on this during the public comment periods. And we're going to have to, this will be on for our next meeting in at the first of September. But I just want to let you know that's I understand that that's something that some people may want to talk about tonight. We also have another request to modify an existing site plan approval. We'll decide whether or not we have to go to a second public hearing on that because it is a modification of a of a site plan approval that was approved after a public hearing. So why don't we start with the public comment period? Anybody have any comments? I don't see any hands raised. You got to raise your hand if you have a comment.
Mr. Chair, I have a hand from Toby as well as Catherine Howe.
Okay, well, you can take Toby and then go to Ms. Howe after that.
Thank you, Toby. I was sending in 95 Granite Street. I see on the agenda the possible approval of a road, Gold Cove Lane, for a new house. I am concerned about the standards that you have. I believe there are eight of them. When you were discussing it before, before it was withdrawn, I asked if you would read the standards and you said you wouldn't. I'm asking again and asking you to reconsider. It is, after all, a public meeting and you wish the public to understand, be informed. I'm concerned about the standard for a proper turnaround at the end of roads. You, Jason Shaw, are on the ambulance crew, so you know how difficult getting to places may be and how crucial it is. And when the planning board makes the determination, they often turn to both the ambulance and the fire department. And you would think those would be sensible standards because those are things that absolutely have to get there, not delivery vehicles or what have you. But it doesn't work out properly that way because the ambulance crews, as you're well aware, will get there, even if it means clawing through a snowbank six feet high and 20 yards long. And the same is true of the fire department. They will get there, no matter how difficult or arduous it is. So asking them, you know, who would be the authorities, in fact, is no good. And you need to come up with objective standards of your own. And really, for any road, there should be a proper turnaround at the end of it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. By the way, Toby and anybody else, those standards that the planning board has for consideration of the adequacy of a way are posted. They're on the planning board webpage. They're one of the tabs on the left-hand side. So anybody can see them at any time and read them, including Toby. So that's a good place to start with those. Anybody else have any, I miss, who else had their hand raised?
Catherine Howe, you're unmuted.
Yeah, okay.
Hello, sir. Attorney Catherine Howe, I live in Manchester, Massachusetts, and I represent two abutters to the planned Gold Cove Lane extension. Before I get started, I just wanted to ask your preference. Would you like to take my comments now? Or would you prefer that I wait till after the application's been presented?
Okay, Ms. Howe, that's a good question. Two things. As I mentioned earlier in our, at the beginning, this is the first time this application has been heard by this. You know, it's before us. It's never been before us before. We're not making any decision on it today. We may have some questions. If you want to make, you know, you made a very substantial written presentation. All members of the planning board have it. I don't see the need for you to, you know, read the presentation to the planning board again. It's, you know, it's quite self-sufficient. Probably better to wait till we discuss it a little bit tonight before you, you know, go into whatever you want to say. So you should probably do this at the second public comment period that we have, which is after we review it. So I mean, you can do whatever you want, but I'm just suggesting that.
So I thank you for unmuting me. That's fine with me. I'll wait until the application's been presented and debated a bit. Thank you.
Anybody else? It didn't look like there are any other comments at this point. So we'll go to the second item of the agenda. We have no minutes to approve. I think there's some personnel issues with the person who was doing the minutes. And we don't have any new minutes, which is very unfortunate, but it is the case. I don't know how or when that will be corrected. So Denise, help. We need someone to be able to, you know, transcribe the minutes. We're now, we're now short on June, July, and we're already into August. We have no minutes for any of those months. So it's going to be a real task for someone new to jump on this if we don't get it going pretty soon. So that's just something to think about. Okay, next item, Landers Symes. Determination of adequacy of a way. Is anybody here on behalf of the applicant? If so, please state your name and who you represent, if you're an attorney. Yes, Bob Disney.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. As you may know, I represent the applicant Jennifer and Landers Symes, and they are prospective purchasers of Six Gold Cove Lane. And for the record, I don't know how that number was issued, but be it as it may, Gulf Coast Lane, as you know, is in the Town Streets Directory. It's a private road. There are three houses on it. This would be the fourth and final house on it. And once constructed, the driveway between four and six will be about 43 feet from one another. Our locus consists of two parcels, an upper and a lower parcel. I provided you with the deed descriptions and the plan descriptions in my application. The upper parcel was laid out in a deed, I mean, excuse me, in a plan of 1939, which certainly predates our zoning. And that's the parcel really at issue here. As 183 feet of frontage on Gold Cove Lane, 75 feet is required. And from the deed and from our other title documents, the owner has deeded rights to use all of the ways identified on the plan. The lower parcel is shown on a plan in 1940, which is Plan 93 in Plan Book 72. And that parcel also includes all rights into any of the rights of way shown on the plan. So I
I'm sorry, can I just interject here, Bob, for a second? First of all, I apologize. We're not posting these, some of these documents. There are a lot of documents in this particular application. Posting at least some of them on the website, they will be posted between now and our next meeting. So you can find them. But they're also, just for everybody's knowledge, the full application is here at the planning board office. And I believe it's also at the clerk's office. Is that correct, Bob?
I believe so.
Yeah, so anybody can go in and see them at request. I do want to say that this is the second application from these applicants. The first one was was filed April 14th of 2022. And it had, you know, a few maps and historical information with it. We never really, never really discussed the application at all because it was withdrawn by the applicants before there was any discussion on it. And so now this is a, has to be considered really a new application. And Bob, could you address what the difference is between the one that was filed earlier in April and the most recent application in terms of your? I understand there's a, there is a language in these deeds that talk about, you know, an easement right of way. And but my recollection from the last time is that the, the surface that was in front of Six Gold Cove Lane or the property that's, that your clients might want to buy was unimproved. And you were seeking a determination as to the adequacy of that surface back in April. And since that time, there have been some improvements made. I assume your clients are the ones who made them on the same surface. And now you're back with a new application and it looks like a different map that your engineers have prepared. So I just wanted to, sorry to, just want to fast forward a few things here. So let you about these.
Well, we started a presentation and I had discussions with you. And I think the intimation was that your regulations assess the suitability of a road based on what you see and not based on how it might appear after it's been improved and completed. And so based on that, we sort of took the cue that the planning board would consider this a little bit, you know, our first application a little bit premature. And so we withdrew it. And there had been no determination, so it was without prejudice. And we, we had an order of conditions that allowed construction. And owners of land that have rights to ways also have, by case law, the right to make those improvements. And so we did that. These were not, as Ms. Howe intimates, paper streets only. They did exist, and I provided an affidavit to you from a former owner, owner both formerly of 75 Granite as well as for Gold Cove Lane. And he describes transiting those for different purposes. And also, and I don't have this in writing, Attorney Feherty, who was one of the attorneys in the case that Ms. Howe alludes to, also drove all of Gold Cove Lane connecting down to West Wharf Road. And we'll be able to provide that in an affidavit if necessary. So these were actual ways that were capable of vehicular passage.
Let me just clarify something. The affidavit and was basically said they would, and this is a key distinction, I think. And I'm not making any judgment here, but I just want to make something clear that the affidavit that I read said that they, you could walk on it. You could, you know, ride a bike on it or whatever, but it was not suitable for vehicular traffic in the condition that it was at that time. It wasn't. I mean, I know there was
Well, I would respectfully disagree with that. And in fact,
I'm just reading the affidavit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it says, it says that at some point, rocks and shrubs were planted across the right of way. And I think that's mentioned in the case that I'm going to talk about in a few moments. And that therefore, you could not drive a car because there were rocks blocking the way. And in fact, it was the sellers of the subject parcel that did that. And they were making the argument in court that the way had been extinguished. And the land court disagreed with that. The land court said, no, these are existing rights of way.
Right, but I mean, there's a right of, there's a right of way. I don't want to belabor this now, but trying to make the distinction between a right of way, a right of access, which it could, you could very well have, and use as use of a use of a way for vehicular traffic. They're, they're two different things. I do remember there was a tree that was in this right of way that is no longer there.
That's correct.
Yeah, so anyway, go ahead.
Well, what I was trying to show with this affidavit is that this was not a paper street. That's really not the standard, though. The standard is, at this point, at the point where you're making the determination, is this an adequate roadway? Is it a suitable width, suitable grades, and adequate construction? The standard is not, as Attorney Howe alludes, was it suitable on or before July 14th, 1951? That would be an impossible standard to try to ascertain. And we're not asking the planning board to go back in time to do that. And you made that quite clear when we first appeared before you that the standard is, what about now? And that was one of the reasons we withdrew the application because we were, we were getting that vibe from you that you might not think it adequate now because the drainage wasn't put in and the compact stones and stuff were not put in. Those were happening in the future. So now all of that has occurred. And I believe that there's really no reasonable argument that this is not suitable to access the locus. And you have before you the fire chief's opinion on that.
By the way, yeah, we got that today. I don't, that will have to wait till next meeting because we don't, we don't consider things at a meeting that were just, you know,
Yeah, well, he's, he's, he's fighting the fires. He had the National Guard. He wasn't able to get to this. And he showed up like the cavalry with it into my office this afternoon. So I sent it to you.
Okay, well, it'll certainly be considered, that's for sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, I didn't know my, I have to check my vibes. Sending out vibes, but anyway. Go ahead. Do you have anything else?
No, not really. I think that we've made it clear that we had the right to make these improvements, that we have rights to this, that the way was in existence prior to the date zoning came into effect in Rockport, and that presently, this way is adequate and suitable. And when you are able to consider the police chief's opinion, he renders that same opinion.
I think you mean the fire chief.
The fire chief, I'm sorry.
Oh, let me ask you one question. And then I'll let my, you know, the other members of the board, if they have any questions. Just get informational. Your, the map, the proposed road that you described or that your engineer described in the, back in April of 2022 is different from what is proposed now. It's, it's shorter. It ends more quickly, kind of closer to your client's boundary line. Is that, is that correct?
Well, what I would suggest is that we actually hear from Rich Williams. And I believe he's in the audience this evening. And he is the engineer who did the work on this. And I'm sure he can describe the technical aspects of his plan.
Does anybody else, any other board members have any questions?
I was also wondering about that change in where exactly this way is. If it goes around the bend where it seems to get steeper. Last time I was there on a site visit, it seemed quite steep to me.
Now it ends, it ends short of that kind of grade and the bend. So maybe your engineer should explain if there's a difference between what you're seeking, what you sought approval for in April and what you're seeking approval for now. Is he here, Bob?
He is, he is here, and I think he's just waiting to be unmuted.
Rich, you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so I can address that. The, the constructed portion of the way, as it, as it sits on the ground, is what was submitted in the current application. The, it is shorter. The, the plan that was submitted in the, in the application back in April included all of the work that was approved by the Conservation Commission. And it was more than is needed to provide adequate frontage, constructed frontage for this lot. So when this lot gets built, when, when the home gets built, there is going to be other work that happens here. And it will be, the road will be longer, but it doesn't need to be longer to provide the necessary frontage. And that's what's constructed and that was what is submitted. And that's what, and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong. That's what we're asking for determination from the board that is adequate.
Okay, so let me just, Mr. Williams, let me just paraphrase. What I think you just said was you've constructed a portion of it now. But the intention is, assuming this is approved, the intention is to continue with the construction beyond where you've, where you've ended now. This isn't the end of this road, in other words.
That's, that's correct. It's, it's the end of, of what's out there now.
Well, then that's, yeah, it's
There needs to be, it needs to be extended because there's a, there's a garage that's on the side of the house. And that extension will provide access to the side of the garage. But at this point, it doesn't make sense to build that because we're going to have to take it apart to build the house.
Have to take something apart?
Yeah, we've got to put utilities in and other things that are required to build the home.
So basically, we're looking at a an incompleted road, which is what you're seeking the planning board's approval for.
Well, no, it's completed. We're asking for a determination based on what's on the ground.
Right, but in other words, it's completed. Like if I were building an interstate from here to Albany and I stopped in Springfield and I said, well, the road's completed, but I intend to go to Albany when you're done. It's essentially not completed because you're intending to make it longer. I mean, this is, this is part of a plan that, you know, whether legally that has any significance, I don't know. But it is part of a plan to build on this right of way beyond where you've shown right now.
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. All right. Any other planning board members have any questions, comments?
Well, I have heard from the conservation community that there are some concerns about what has gone on with the work on this property. And I don't know that it's directly our business in terms of adequacy the way. But since we don't have a functioning conservation commission, this is a concern. And specifically, they consider this a sediment-producing coastal bank. And there have been alterations to the topography and innovation. And these should have been coordinated with the conservation agent in accordance with what approvals had been issued. So I think this is falling between the cracks and I'm not real happy about that.
I have a comment.
Yeah, Harry, go ahead.
The DEP has issued a superseding order. Essentially granting permission for this to go forward.
Superseding what order, Harry?
Basically, the findings of the DEP are superseding those previous findings of the Conservation Commission when it was able to maintain a quorum and hear this case previously.
Okay, well, that, that would be something probably we should at least be aware of.
It would help if the DEP were able to come on site and make sure that it's being obeyed. And that's not the case.
Well, okay, this is what, you know, we, unless there are any additional submissions from the applicant, I think what we're going to do here is because this, you know, this obviously, there are a lot of issues that this raises. And they may be resolved, I'm not sure. But we need I think I need to consult with, we need to consult with town council on this. And if anybody, if everybody on the planning board hasn't actually been onsite and seen the, what's there now, you should probably do that. Certainly between now and our next meeting on September 1st. And I think on September 1st, we'll have a much better idea of what, what to address here because we will address the question, which is the adequacy of this way in connection with the passage of vehicular traffic. And, you know, whether the, the, the idea that this is going to be completed at a later date is, I don't know where that falls at this point. I wasn't, I didn't know whether it would. I thought maybe the applicant was stopping where he is now, which would maybe simplify things. But he's not. And to continue on to where it was shown on the map that was filed in April of 2022. So now we know that. We have that bit of information. So we'll, this will be on the agenda on September 1st and we'll proceed at that point. Anybody have any comments or questions?
It looks like the applicant has his hand raised.
Oh, Bob Disney.
Yes. Regarding the, the issue of how far they completed the roadway, I think that you just heard it was done for practical reasons because why build something if you have to tear it apart to put in the utilities? But it does extend to the frontage that is needed. And it does extend beyond a driveway. So even if the applicant decided not to put in the garage for some reason and didn't need to continue it, I think you can make your determination based on, on what is built and what exists on the ground. Once you go there, you'll see that this is really not a very challenging site. In terms of Mr. Mekus's comment about DEP, I believe that we have followed all of the rules and the order of conditions. So there was a superseding order of conditions received from the state and then a local order of conditions when we went back to the Conservation Commission. And they made certain requirements of notification. And the applicant followed those and kind of went above and beyond since there wasn't a Conservation Commission, a conservation agent, notified the town through the town administrator and also notified DEP. We've contacted DEP on this and other applications because it's really difficult for the town to function when we don't have a conservation commission. And DEP has said essentially, they don't have the bandwidth. And see if your board of select, select persons will hear these matters. And so I think it's And so I think it's, it's just we're, we're in this holding pattern, but we did everything required under the order in terms of notifications and such.
Thank you. Okay, um, anybody else before we move on to our next item?
Looks like Landers has his hand up.
No events from Landers as well as Eric Hutchins.
Yeah, yes, this is Landers. Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, so, uh, I just wanted to touch on the concom issues. As Bob said, we have filed all of the proper paperwork and notifications prior to starting work. With the local Conservation Commission and with DEP, we are also filing, we, there's also a weekly inspection done by the engineering firm that Rich runs, and a monthly filing with DEP of those weekly inspection reports. Um, and the last one just went in about a week ago, and we are in full, at least in the engineering's mind and DEP mind, we are in full compliance with the current orders that pertain to conservation on that lot.
Okay, thank you. Uh, anybody else who hasn't already spoken? Okay, we'll move on to the next item. This will be, um,
There's still a hand from Eric Hutchins.
Yeah, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. Eric Hutchins, uh, 45 Pools Lane. Um, I had a chance to, uh, take, take a peek at the site, you know, over the past weeks, months, whatever, um, seeing it on multiple agendas over this past year. And I want to just touch strictly on the adequacy of the way issue, which is in front of the planning board. Nothing on rights of way or, or anything, but other inadequacy.
Hey, Eric, let me just stop you for a second. That, what you're about to say would be important, but I'm just wondering whether that would be more pertinently addressed at our next meeting, because some people here haven't seen it, some of the members of the planning board, so what you say may be lost on them. I mean, you can, you can talk about it now, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'll just make it brief. Um, and, and, um, obviously, it, it'll, it'll continue. Um, yeah, I'd like, just to have that quick opportunity just to kind of put that out there. Took, 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 took a quick peek at it, and, and frankly, the existing houses and road hardly meet, in my opinion, adequate. The existing road, if you want to call it that, is, is at best a, a narrow driveway, sharp turns and multiple steep turns and slopes. When I walked it, there were multiple cars parked on the side. So this, um, the, the width of this road is extremely thin to begin with, independent of putting one on the end. They're obviously all old houses that go way back, nothing anybody can do. But I think one thing that needs to be thought about is the cumulative impact. We have all kinds of short, narrow roads in this town. I'm not aware of many in this entire town of Rockport that are this thin, this narrow, this much turn, a curb cut off that busy of a road in Rockport. So I think that though, when you get out there, think about the cumulative impacts associated with what's already there, and then adding to it on a steep ending, um, over a steep slope. So that, that's it. I appreciate the opportunity to bring that up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, one more public, I see a hand up.
There's a hand from Ashley Shedd.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, this is Ashley Shedd, um, and I just wanted to, uh, comment on the superseding order of conditions and, and point out that a couple of things that are clearly stated is that all other permitting um, and inspections, you know, should be, uh, required and issued prior to the commencement of work. And also that the, the superseding order of conditions does not, um, allow this project to go forth in phases. It's supposed to start, um, and finish, uh, and neither of those things have been followed so far. So thank you. That's all.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, that's it. Set from Miss Howe, who's gonna address us, I think, at the end, toward the end of the meeting on these issues. And so we'll move on, September 1. This will be on the agenda again. I think we'll have more information by that time, and hopefully we'll be able to make a decision on that day. So let's go to the next item, item four, Michael Caffrey, Caffey, Sixth South Street. You request to modify the existing site plan, uh, to change the surface of a, um, it's like a driveway, but it provides access to several different residences, is that? Are you here? Someone here on behalf of, uh, Sixth South Street?
I'm not seeing anybody just.
Okay, well then, we'll, uh, we'll move on, if there's no one here. I'm surprised, but okay, um, coastal, this is the coastal floodplain, um, article. And, um, Tom, uh, did you, I wasn't at the last meeting, did you, did the board discuss this at the last meeting?
Indeed, we did. We went through revision by revision and, uh, checked every one. And I think we had a consensus that, uh, they're all good with possible exception of that one paragraph, uh, that was being deleted as recommended by MIPC. The reason being, it could be controversial. I think the consensus was we should delete it, but the concern was it could uh, affect the approval of the remainder of that.
Yeah, okay, just so that everyone knows, this is a, a paragraph that gave, as, as I recall, it gave the, uh, Board of Appeals Special Permit Authority to basically allow infill construction of residential units in the coastal floodplain. If there are existing units around, existing units around it, but it would only be through a a variance under the standards that are, um, in the federal FEMA regulations, and which are very strict. But, you know, that's, uh, that's something we can talk about later, but anyway, that's, that was the paragraph we did prior to the town meeting on May 16th. We did modify this to make it at least more grammatical and understandable. But that all became, uh, moot, because this and all the other provisions in Article B of the, on the warrant, were not approved by two-thirds majority, so therefore it was not approved. So now we've had a second chance to, to look at this. Tom Mekus has kind of taken the lead, and that paragraph that grants the ZBA, the, uh, Special Permit Authority under the current version has been deleted, meaning there is no more Special Permit Authority. And I think that's, you know, the, probably the most, the leading that probably is the most controversial part of any changes. You know, I don't, the worst thing that can happen, I guess, is that it, it's gonna be a standalone article at, uh, at town meeting, so it could be not approved by the two-thirds, in which in that case, we're stuck with what we have now. And, you know, that's, that's the downside risk of changing that in the way that it is now. I don't think the other provisions, the other changes you made, Tom, they're, they're pretty non-controversial, and, yeah, I don't see them as being a problem, but this one, you know, may be a problem only because it, it eliminates planning board, I, I'm sorry, eliminates ZBA authority that they, that the ZBA now has. And, you know, the ZBA has already been tapped that way after the May 16 meeting. So, you know, I don't know how they'll feel about this, but anyway.
Well, if I may, the, uh, my concern was not so much about who has the authority, but rather the fact that we're allowing infill construction.
I understand a hundred percent.
Okay.
That's your concern. I understand that. It's a legitimate concern. But we are gonna, and this will be the next thing we, we'll talk about, is we are gonna have a public hearing on these, on these zoning changes. We have to, you know, renotice it, and so we'll hear from the members of the public about this, and see how, you know, that's what hearings are for. So, anyway, okay, then I, I don't really have anything more to say about it. You've already discussed it. Will, um, I think the next time we'll be discussing it will be when we have a public hearing. Which brings me to item six. Member items. We, we are working toward, uh, having a second special town meeting on, to bring back Article B in, in a different form, as we've already talked about, breaking it up into several different sections. Uh, included in that will likely be a revised, what is it? Not stormwater, but revised drinking water, uh, protection, overlay protection district that Eric Hutchins has been working on. And, um, you know, we, we've talked about it. We, you just got a copy of that. And I just got a copy today of a, of a revised zoning map to show the different boundary lines. I'm not saying that I agree with everything that, that was done, uh, because in some ways it looks like it brings back some of the confusion that was there in, in the original one, which is on the books now. But anyway, that is gonna be one more item. That's gonna be a standalone article uh, at the special town meeting. We are, what I'd like to do, unless anybody has any objections, is to schedule a public hearing on all of these articles in front of the planning board on October 5, October 5th, that's a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday before our regular meeting. I don't want to do this on the regular meeting, not just because we have no idea what we're, what's gonna be on the agenda on a regular meeting, but it would be that Wednesday. We'll duly notice it. Uh, you know, two publications in the paper, sending it out to all the, the different entities that has to be sent out to post it and post the changes on the website, et cetera, et cetera. But I just want to make sure that everybody is, um, okay with October 5, which is more than a month away to schedule our public hearing. And then, then it could be, uh, it's a little too early to say now, but it looks like we may have the special town meeting, um, either on Monday, the 7th of November, or the 14th of November. So, that's, those are, those last two dates are very tentative, but we're working on those, and by the October 5th date, we're in control of that. So, uh, I'd like to do that if, if possible. Anybody have any sense of that? Okay, well then, that's what we'll do. I'll, I am gonna put a formal motion to schedule a public hearing on our September 1 agenda, but I just, before I did that, I wanted to make sure that, that there are no glitches now, but it seems like everyone's okay with October 5, so that'll be the date.
Oh, what were the two that you mentioned in November?
Uh, this is, this is just from my conversation with our town clerk. Uh, possibly November 7 or November 14. Those are Mondays. And the next, the next Monday is the one before Thanksgiving. I would want to try to avoid that if possible.
There's a Sandy Bay event on the 7th of November at 7:00 PM, but you're always gonna have some conflict.
Yeah, you gotta pick your meetings, you know, so. You mean Sandy Bay Yacht Club or Sandy Bay Historical Society or?
Yeah, historical, they have an event about World War II.
Oh, okay. Well, yeah, sometimes you just can't keep everything clear. So, okay, that's, oh, that's all I have for member items. If anybody else has anything, let us know.
A couple of long-term things. Uh, just maybe plant some seeds. Uh, been to different kinds of, uh, environmental and other meetings, including MIPC meetings, where municipalities are starting to talk about improving their building codes for energy efficiency. And some of them go as far as being net zero. So I don't know what authority we have in the building code area, but I don't know who else it would fall to if we're gonna make our municipal, uh, code any stricter than the state code. So just, uh, just to plant a
Oh, uh, and actually, that reminds me, um, the state has, as of August 10th, has published their final, uh, regulations for the, um, you know, the, uh, communities arrangements. And they, they are changed significantly from what, um, they started out to be. I think they read the comments and took them to heart. The, um, the required minimum areas that need to be set aside for multifamily housing to be, you know, so you can get these grants, that's, that's the carrot and the stick, have, have diminished considerably. I think they've gone down from 25 acres now to 13 acres. I haven't had a chance to, um, to read these, um, but I urge you to take, everyone I think has a copy of them, because I sent everyone a copy, including the cover letter that went with it, and, um, yeah, this is something that we're gonna need to pay attention to. That was my other item.
I think coincidentally, we have 13 acres.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're just shy of 13. We're very close. Yeah. I mean, we could get 13 acres easily. But, you know, I, I, I really do think, I, I, I'm not touting our horn or anything, but reading their concerns, it would, they, the state raised some issues that are exactly what we address in our letter. You know, the, the unavailability of suitable land, I mean, all these things where we talked about. And boy, they, they, they paid attention, so that's all I have to say at this point. Which is good. Okay, now.
One other thing I wanted to mention coming up, this, uh, Town Green, you know, has a study with the Harvard School of Graduate Design. And one of the things they'll be doing is putting on a series of workshops for Good Harbor. What to do going forward with rising sea level and increasing storm surges. And although it's specific to Good Harbor, there's a lot of similarities with Long Beach. So I think we should keep in touch with that and, and maybe see what we can learn from that. It's coming up in the fall sometime. I'm, I'm on the planning group setting up the workshops.
About decreasing rainfall.
That will keep the system in a pattern.
That's all I can say, wow.
Well, the only water you'll have will be a storm, so it's great.
Right. Uh, okay, now I'm gonna go to comments. I know, Miss Howe, you patiently waited uh, to the comment period to address, you wanted to address your concerns about the, um, the Simes, the, uh, Sixth Gold Cove Lane, um, road adequacy project. And I, I do have a question before you start. I just, I'm trying to kind of narrow this down, so I can talk about it with, maybe with town council in some intelligent way, is that is there any disagreement, at least with you, about whether there in fact exists a right of way that adjoins the Simes' property? Not, not a road, not an improved surface, but that there, there is a right of way that does, is adjacent to their property. Is there any disagreement about that?
Um, essentially, no. There's no disagreement about the existing right of way. There's no disagreement about, um, the, the party's rights to improve the existing right of way. Our uh, major argument is that the right of way is not the same thing as a road. Um, and I'm not going to reiterate my letter submission, because I know you guys have it, and we'll be discussing this at the next meeting. And I'm not going to reiterate my letter submission because I know you guys have it and we'll be discussing this at the next meeting. I did have a couple of quick points I wanted to make, and also I wanted to briefly recognize my co-counsel Meredith Fine, who's also on this call and has been working on this case with me. And so I just briefly wanted to note that and urge this board to please consider the entirety of the road and not just the small portion that's been improved. I think that's really important. This is as a couple of people have stated, a windy, difficult road as it is, and the planned extension will make that more difficult. It's on a blind, it's around a blind corner. It comes out in a dangerous part of Granite Street. And I would really just, just urge this commission to, our board to really carefully, carefully consider the adequacy for everyone because there is a right of way and there's multiple landowners that have rights to use that right of way. So it's not intended to be someone's private driveway. It's a, it's a right of way that multiple people have rights to pass and repass by foot on. And I would note also, in, in finally, that just that the affidavit, it does not describe a road. It describes a hiking trail that one could cross-country ski on. That's an entirely different thing. And the law is very clear here that for an A and R endorsement, which is what we're here on, there must have been an existing road on the ground at the time subdivision law went into effect. And I think the evidence is very clear that there has never been an existing road on the ground that would service the property that Mr. Biznick's clients hope to, hope to buy.
Yeah, that, that was, I'm glad you raised that issue about the A and R because usually when we have an A and R, we have a situation where someone has a parcel and they want to, you know, divide it into two. I'm simplifying it. And they're on, and they want to use some right of way or road to service either one or both of the parcels that they, they're creating. And so you look at the adequacy of the right of the, of the way for vehicular traffic. I mean, that's kind of the classic A and R. But here we already have, a lot is already created. We already have a lot. So would the same A and R standard apply?
Yes, in my opinion it would. And this doesn't qualify for A and R endorsement because, because there was no road on the ground at the time subdivision law was codified in Rockport in 1951. There was a right of way. I don't dispute that at all. There was a footpath that people walked along. I don't dispute that at all. But there was not a road on the ground. There has never been a road on the ground in front of the lot.
So is there any way for the applicant to, to get what they want here? You know, I mean, is there any other avenue or are they just stuck, would they be, have to decide they, they wanted to buy a lot that had no access? How would they get an improved surface to their property if they could?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I would respectfully suggest that perhaps that's a risk that was knowingly undertaken by the buyers as they haven't closed on this property. I think it's, it's a risk that they took knowing they might not be able to build on it. And that, that is what it is. It's a, it's a contingent sale. It's not gone through. They.
I, I think we understand that, but I'm just wondering. Usually what happens with A and R is if it doesn't get approved, you know, the next thing is, well, you got to do a subdivision or something and, you know, it's, the standards are more onerous and you got to improve the surface. But, but it doesn't necessarily prevent someone from, from doing it. It just, they just have to do it in a more difficult way. I just, I'm just curious to know whether you or your co-counsel have any views on that, or, or is your position that, well, if this isn't, this cannot be approved as a road for vehicular traffic and therefore this, this lot, which has been there, I mean, there's no argument there. I think that a lot has been there, that the lot will, cannot be sold, at least to anybody who wants to build anything on. Which it sounds like is what your position is.
Meredith, do you want to address that?
She muted?
Oh, yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now. Did you hear my question?
Meredith Fine, 108 East Main Street in Gloucester. A couple of thoughts on that. If you read the purchase and sale agreement that the parties executed in 2019, they were well aware that there was permitting needed for this, for this lot.
Really concern us what they agreed privately. I'm just asking.
The other thing that I would say is that I think, I, don't hold me to this, but I think that there's another right of way in the back of this property. Is that right? Catherine, where the utilities, the sewer line runs. They actually.
That's a sewer, that's for sewer line.
Yeah, but it is a, it is a right of way.
Well, for sewers, yeah.
No, there's a, there's a second right of way that adjoins the 20-foot, but it, and it leads down to the, to the beach. I don't know. I don't know that that could be, I don't know if that could be accessed another way or not.
All right, well.
Whoever created, the, the people that created the lot gave it two accesses, not just one.
Well, they gave, yeah, I think they gave that one, I'm just going from memory here, they gave that one in the back for the town to run a sewer line. But I, I don't think there's any, what I, what I don't think, and this is good for us to iron this out because I think we need to all know this, is that number one, there's no dispute that there is a right of way on the ground that adjoins Gold Cove Lane, Sixth Gold Cove Lane. There's no dispute about that. Also.
Did you say that, did you say right of way on the ground?
Well, it's there. The right of way. The right of way that goes, that adjoins Sixth Gold Cove Lane is, it's on a map and it's described. Right? Okay. And there's no, is nobody saying that, well, no, this isn't, actually, this isn't a right of way at all and they have no right of way, et cetera. They have a right of way. It's on a map. And then the second thing is they, they, there is a lot that is defined that is, that's been given the number of Sixth Gold Cove Lane. But it is a, it is an existing lot. Or two lots, actually. There's, I don't think there's any dispute there. Okay, that's, I think that's where the agreements fall apart after that, so.
May I respond to, to one thing that my brother, brother Biznick said a little earlier?
Well, you know, I don't want to get into a debate here and so why don't we for the next time? There'll be bullying, there'll be more discussion, you know? So. Anyway, okay. Let's, let's move on to any other public comments, not talking about Gold Cove Lane, please.
Mr. Chair, we have a hand from Bob Biznick. Bob, if it's related to the previous one, if you could put it down, leave it up if it's related to something else, as well as Toby Arsenian.
Yeah, I don't want to take any more Gold Cove Lane comments at this point. I mean, we're going to be talking about it a lot, so.
All right, then I would say, Toby, assuming it's not related to Gold Cove Lane.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. In the course of talking about the coastal floodplain zoning, you said that you felt that none of the changes were controversial. That's not the case. I objected to one of the things that was changed before. It's still in place. As I said before, the whole thing needs to be rewritten. It doesn't need tinkering, which is what Tom Meekus has done. Need to throw the whole thing out and start from scratch. And I offered to help. At one point you asked if the offer was still good and I said yes, although I have no expertise. I do know how to start. But now you propose to go forward with it as amended and I guess, you know, considering what happened at the last zoning hearing, I would keep my large trap shut and save my remarks for the town meeting, my ammunition dry. As for the train.
Wait a second, hold on. If you've got some changes, Toby, that you think should be made, we're going to listen to them, but we have to see them.
No, you're not going to listen to them because I'm saving them for the town meeting, which is my right and, my right and prerogative.
While you're doing that is, is getting up there and making a show of being against something instead of trying to work now when we have the time to consider them and, and perhaps incorporate them into what we're putting forward. Why would you not take advantage of that opportunity? I don't understand it. This is.
For the umpteenth time, because the whole thing is rotten from start to finish and needs to be rewritten from scratch. Anyway. On another topic, the train station, you said that it would be easy to add the additional area. That means going back to a town meeting and altering the zoning map. So it might or might not be easy. And earlier you said that all of this was done because it was for the good of the town rather than to appease the state. Now you seem to be interested in appeasing the state and confident that you have succeeded in doing so. I'm indifferent to that, but the voters offered a second chance that it might reconsider and think differently.
Well, well, the 13 acres, the way you arrive at that may be different from what you're thinking. I don't care about appeasing the state. I didn't care about it before May 16th. I don't care about it now. But we, I want to look into these, into the law, and I hope that you would take a look at it too. The, the new guidelines, which are now published, and see what you have to say. We're with, with the approved T O V O D, we're just over 12 acres just with that. And I, I, I think we're very close to the minimum requirement. Before it was 50 acres total and 25 contiguous acres. So it's changed quite a bit. And if anything, I think the state has worked toward reaching out to the communities that objected to their plans to shrink the required areas. But you should probably take a look at it yourself and see what you think, because I'd be interested in hearing what you have to say. Okay. Anything else, Toby? I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Unmuted. Yes. You spoke about availability of grants, which we would now be eligible for and perhaps weren't, although you were not concerned about the state more about the zoning being right for the town. You're convinced it's right for the town. I'm convinced it's a disaster in the making. But as it turned out, Mitch, when asked, said that we got nothing from those grant programs. So that's, you know, a dead issue.
Well, well, it is. I mean, right. Really, you're right. Maybe we'll get something in the future if we.
If we apply for them, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, if you don't apply, you won't get them guaranteed, you know? Anyway, okay, anybody else? All right, no other public comments?
Before you quit, are we going to schedule a site visit?
Yeah, anybody can just go down because this is accessible to, you know, the public, really. Anybody can go down there. So I don't think we need to. I just urge everybody who hasn't taken one to take one. Unlike other site visits where we're going onto private property, this is a visit you can make on your own, you know, and see what you think. I've already been down there once. I may go down there again.
And on the, the item for the South Gold Cove, will that be a, a noticed hearing or just another discussion?
Say that again?
We have a noticed hearing for Sixth Gold Cove at our next meeting?
No, you know, we, we were going to do a noticed hearing, but the applicant didn't show up at the meeting, so.
No, for Sixth Gold Cove.
Yeah, we don't, no, not Sixth Gold Cove. I'm sorry, Six happens to be the same number, Sixth South Street. I'm sorry, you were saying Sixth Gold Cove?
Yes.
I wasn't contemplating a public hearing.
Okay.
So. I think we'll have a lot of discussion without it. Okay. All right, if that's, that's all everyone has, does anybody have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion to adjourn, Tom, seconded by Harry, roll call vote, Peter.
Hi.
Tom.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor. Meeting adjourned at 7:35. We'll see you folks September 1.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Take care.
Take care.